I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners for November 6, 2025. Thought before we started that we were going to have, we've had problems with Internet all morning and phone service too, but it's back in business. So we actually can, we're streaming at this moment, thank goodness, and we're able to also accept telephone calls. So citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you may do so by calling 336-422-1200. That number again is 336-422-1200, and you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. And any member of the audience who's interested in speaking and participating in the public session, you just need to fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk, Ashley Matthews at the end of the DSCR. So we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Wizzenhut, and I'd like to ask all of you are able to stand.
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, actually, we have, first two items are two proclamations recognizing November 6 as World Prematurity Awareness Day. First, I'd like to welcome Anne Smith, Director of Women's and Children's Health, and Davida Henderson, Director of Operations of Novant Health. They are here actually to actually receive the first proclamation and like to invite Vice Chair Wizzenhut to actually read the proclamation. And if you all, if you are all here, you may certainly come up. I'm looking. Come see them, go right in.
Proclamation recognizing November 6, 2025, as World Prematurity Awareness Day in Forsyth County, North Carolina, whereas families face serious health risks, and Novant Health fights to their health, fights for their health by supporting research, leading programs, and providing education and advocacy. Whereas Novant Health is committed to amplifying the voice of pregnant people and families in North Carolina. Whereas Novant Health has worked extensively to improve access to prenatal care for all, increase awareness of the impact of implicit bias on maternity healthcare, and raise awareness of the importance of optical preconception health as a strategy to improve maternal health, reduce preterm birth, infant mortality, and maternal mortality. Whereas Novant Health will continue to work with the community to address the maternal and infant health crisis for prematurity, as well as the social determinants of health, such as transportation and housing. And whereas the month of November is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 6 is recognized as World Prematurity Day to raise awareness. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize November 6, 2025, as World Prematurity Awareness Day in Forsyth County, North Carolina, for this day, November 6, 2025.
Seconded motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we'll make sure that Novant receives a copy of the proclamation. The second proclamation recognizing World Prematurity Awareness Day will be received by Sharita Sutton, our Assistant Public Health Director, and, or it may be Joshua's, will come, our Health Director will be here receiving it. And also, would you mind meeting Commissioner Woodbury at the podium? There we are. She will read the proclamation.
Thank you. The proclamation reads, proclamation recognizing November 6, 2025, as World Prematurity Awareness Day in Forsyth County, North Carolina, whereas a developing baby goes through important growth throughout pregnancy, and babies born 32 weeks have, born before 32 weeks have higher rates of death and disability. Whereas in 2023, preterm births accounted for about 10.9% of infant deaths in Forsyth County, and low birth weight accounted for about 10.5% of infant deaths in Forsyth County. Whereas in 2023, the rate of preterm birth among African-American women was about 50% higher than the rate of preterm birth among white or Hispanic women in the United States. Whereas Novant Health, Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, nonprofit agencies, and the Forsyth County Department of Public Health fight for infant health by supporting research, leading programs, and providing education and advocacy. Whereas the Forsyth County Department of Public Health provides programs to address preterm birth and low birth weight to include care management for high-risk pregnancies, nurse family partnership, healthy beginnings, care management for at-risk children and women, infants and children funding. And whereas Novant Health and Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, work to improve access to prenatal care for all, increase awareness of the impacts of implicit bias on maternal healthcare, and raise awareness of the importance of optimal preconception health as a strategy to improve maternal health, reduce preterm birth, infant mortality, and maternal mortality. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes November 6, 2025, as World Prematurity Awareness Day in Forsyth County, North Carolina, proclaim this sixth day of November, 2025.
Seconded that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. There we go. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of October 23, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Do approve it.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we have five speaker cards and one phone call.
Okay. Let's take the phone call first, simply because, in case it dies again.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Wilson. My address is 4455 Brassfield Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27105.
Thank you, sir. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. You may begin.
Good afternoon. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion as an American citizen. I would like to speak about two things of equal importance to me, love of my community and my pride as a citizen of our community, our country, and the world. I would like to provide you with an anecdote. As a teenager of 17, I had the opportunity to participate in a civic movement that not only helped shape my life as I approached manhood, but the nature of how we as Black people saw our city and how our city learned to respect us as full partners in a city that, like our country, had not come to grips with justice for all. The year was 1963. We had demonstrated at K&amp;W every day from the month of March to August. Every day we marched as we saw it, this was the last holdout to our freedoms. K&amp;W not allowing us to eat there, it seems so strange now, 62 years later, something so small as where you could sit, sleep, live in America was ever questioned. We were able to complete our mission a week before the march on Washington. Yet even today, 2025, we find ourselves here discussing a citizen who was hoping to do a good deed that could uplift his and our community, almost a gift of his property that he had purchased and paid taxes on for five years. Some of us think land is the soul of our nation. The founding fathers didn't allow you to vote if you didn't own land or property from 1787 to 1792. But in New Hampshire, white males who did not own property for the first time were allowed to vote. Imminent domain in North Carolina, the law allows fair compensation for your property, reference Chapter 40-A. As we know, one of our commissioners suggested that Mr. Mars had paid $19,000 for the land, and the city of Winston-Salem was wrong to make a deal of $50,000. We are all aware of property appreciation, and with the fast rise in prices, not just in our country, but our state, not just in our county, but our state and country, the land across the street from Mr. Mars, very close in size and similar, has been appraised for $168,000. Which brings us to the question of why Mr. Martin would insult Mr. Mars by suggesting he had overestimated the value of his property, when in fact, we feel we are looking at a hero who seems to deserve an apology and a thank you for sharing his land with our city at such a bargain price. So we wonder why the question of imminent domain could ever be discussed. Again, I thank you for allowing me my First Amendment right. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Kim Mays. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Kimberly Mays, 2400 North Liberty Street. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Mays, General Manager of Mays Landscaping and Concrete Incorporated, and daughter Ricky Mays, President of our unclassified general contracting company specializing in public highway and roadway construction. Bottom line up front, we'd like to respectfully remind the board of the importance of equitable consideration and treatment of all businesses in today's agenda item. At the previous meeting, the description of a private citizen's arbitrary valuation approach was a bit of an oversimplification as a business with 30 years of industry experience, minority women business enterprise program and award winner, and longstanding partner in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Our 2020 property purchase, .12 acres, a well-maintained, tax-current commercially-zoned lot across a more existing 1.4 acre satellite site, was a strategic opportunity supported by our strong comparables at the time. While assessed tax values are a reference point for value, real estate and business standards almost always rely on comparative market analysis, often telling a more accurate story in the present and future market. While considering that lot, we saw that Wendy Middleton, a 25-year real estate professional, sold .16 for $58,000 in June of 2020, a month before our purchase. Veran Enterprises LLC sold .1 acres for $57,000 that same month, monitoring, and monitoring the market after our purchase continuously, we see things like .12 acres just over the 52 North Bridge, a commercially-zone and vacant lot, sold for $90,000 in February this year to a Florida investment company. Forsyth Economic Ventures Incorporated, a nonprofit governed by House leadership, sold four tracts ranging from approximately .15 to .4 acres for $87,500 each in November of 2022, including the reference parking lot from the previous meeting. We trust that Kevin Cheshire, Acting Executive Director of Forsyth Economic Ventures and House at the time, understood property value. While individual owners likely sold in a vacuum of personal circumstances and understanding, it is a rarity for businesses to buy or sell at tax value outside of a declining market. Personally, our families are all products of Winston-Salem Forsyth County school systems. My father and sister are U.S. Army veterans, my middle sister an orthopedic surgeon at Yale Hospital, I myself and my day job serve as a senior business consultant at IBM. Our values are rooted in education and community growth, not obstruction, as reflected in a fair and commensurate, mincerate agreement with the BOE. We simply appreciate your renewed commitment to procedural due process and transparency, and respectfully ask that our participation receive the same thoughtful consideration during this process as afforded to all businesses. Thank you so much for your time and attention, Commissioners.
Karen Cuthol, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Karen Cuthol, 500 West 5th Street. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Five years ago, Mr. Mays purchased land for $19,000. Since then, property values in Forsyth County have risen more than 55% and after 10 to 12% each year. The school system came to Mr. Mays and offered him $50,000, not as a gift, but as fair market-based and respectful price for property that is ready and suitable for a new school site. Thus, this offer aligns with what the county has paid others for similar purchases. So why, when the school system goes to a Black man and negotiates fairly, are we questioning the value of his land? Why, when countless white property owners have been paid their asking price, is this one being challenged? Let's be honest, the history of this county is filled with stories of Black families, including my own, whose land was undervalued, taken, or lost in the name of progress. And I heard the triggering words of imminent domain being mentioned, uh-uh. To even consider imminent domain regarding Mr. Mays is to reopen the very wounds we claim to be healing. It repeats the same history we should be determined never to repeat. Mr. Mays and his family know the worth of their land, and the very thought of taking it makes us all step up, stop and reflect on what justice truly means. Do what is good, do what is noble, do what is right, approve the contract, honor the agreement that the school system negotiated, and remember, the worth of doing what is right in Forsyth County will always be greater than the cost of the land.
Reverend Emily Harkins, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Emily Harkins, 502 North Broad Streets. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This season, we have the great gift and responsibility of leading our city and our county's emergency winter shelter response. And today, I show up here just to simply share gratitude and appreciation for you. Because of your leadership and conversations and partnership, we get to house people this winter. Through the sharing of space at the Annex II Building on Highland Avenue, and your financial investment through the community grants, along with substantial support from the City of Winston-Salem, Atrium Health, Church Partners, St. Timothy's, New Story, and many others, we will shelter and provide warmth for over 140 people this winter, including families with children. Each night, every person who walks through the doors will have a bed to sleep in, a blanket for warmth, a full night's rest, and a good meal to sustain them. Never in our city or county's recent history have we been able to provide care to this many people on a given night. And so that is something extraordinary, and it is something to celebrate. So today, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for helping us save lives this winter. Thank you for helping us hold the dignity of humans. Thank you for acknowledging how beautiful everyone is. Thank you for thinking creatively with us, and for taking a chance on us, and for stewarding your resources with both compassion and wisdom. Right now, the world around us feels really, really deeply hard. It is divided, and weary, and uncertain, but this work, this unified effort between the county, and the city, and healthcare, and faith partners, it is a glimpse of the very best of who we are and what we can be together. And it reminds us that when we work across systems and stories, and we create something beautiful, and something powerful, a community that quite literally makes room for one another. So thank you for being a part of this work alongside us. Thank you for emboldening us to do the work that we feel deeply called to do. Thank you.
Mike Berisi, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Berisi. My address is 3331 Healy Drive. This is in addition to the proposal that I made with previous, and it's a proposal regarding the government shutdown, and about the inspector's job that I wish to, for this board to create. This is to provide oversight and complete essential tasks during the current government shutdown. Using personal resources if necessary, this proposal reflects my willingness to ensure these tasks are carried out despite the lack of official funding to justify the creation of this temporary position, or permanent position. I will summarize essential operations effective by the shutdown, provide oversight ensuring continuity where possible using personal resources. I am willing to use my personal finances to complete these tasks, ensuring the critical work continues during the shutdown. My knowledge of this situation and readiness to act justifies the creation of this position. The reason this proposal is important to me, before my first appearance here, I had to take my mother to Atrium Hospital. My second appearance here, I found out that I had to move my mother to hospice. I didn't say anything because I felt that the people needed this position. From my second to my third, my mother passed away. I didn't say anything to the board because I think my people need this position to help manage funds. The next thing is, because of the government shutdown, I cannot get my mother's death certificate. All right? I didn't mention that because I think my, this position is important. Because I can't get my mother's death certificate, I can't get my mother's remains for a proper burial. I didn't mention that because I think my position, this position is important to me. And it's essential. And I wish you would add this proposal to your agenda so you can vote on creating this position, so I can help allocate funds as inspector. And that's about it. I, I'm having all these issues happening in my life right now, but it's not affecting me to the point that it's gonna help me not help the government in their positions. Thank you for your attention.
The next speaker is Kwame Kia Shavers. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, County Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, and County Attorney. My name is Kwame Kia Shavers. My address is 3850 Heather Vulane. And the first thing I want to say directly to the individuals who are in disagreement with paying Mays Landscaping and Concrete Company the agreed-upon purchase point is, I want you to know the first thing about real estate, because I am a licensed Realtor in North Carolina. A property is worth what a seller is willing to accept and a buyer is willing to pay, period. But if you want to go with numbers, because in the last meeting you said $26,000, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but your math was off. It was a difference of 31K to 50 from 19. But you like numbers, so let's try it. In 2018, December 28, 2018, the property was purchased for $52,12. Then on the same day, it was deeded to Triad Legacy for $694, okay? That was in 2018. We're talking two years later, Mays Landscaping and Concrete Company paid $19,000. So that means from when it was originally purchased in 2018, it was almost four times the value that he paid for, that they paid for two years prior to, but you expect him to take $19,000. And this is after you enter into an OTP, which is an offer to purchase, an agreement to purchase land or property for $50,000, and then you suggest that the property be condemned and the county take it over? Well, try that. And I would suggest that he get an attorney, because he would at minimum still get his $50,000, as the county attorney stated. I like to follow the rules. How you doing? I have two concerns today, just so we're on the same page. My second concern pertains to the members of this community who rely on SNAP, that is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And as you can see, this meeting is empty as it is every week, which that's how the Republicans on this board like it, because that's how you voted when we tried to get the meeting to 6:00 PM. But I had families lined up to come in here and speak to you guys, to let you know that everyone that is on SNAP is not someone who does not work and try the best they can to take care of their family, but they couldn't come today. You want to know why? Because they work. Or they're picking up their children from school, because they're typically single parents. So guess what? It's them, or it's really typically no one else. And so the county's response to that is to call 211? When we are already aware that food banks are already suffering from supply and demand being able to provide for this community alone, and we expect them to somehow be able to serve as an uptick of almost 60,000 constituents? Now y'all like to do math in here, but somebody got a problem with it. We can do better. The $5 million that you excused from the school board, which you couldn't loan in the first place, I don't care if you gave it directly to the school board, or you gave it to a bill collector, it was a loan because you expected your money back. But somehow you found a way to make sure that you didn't recollect that money, because it's illegal, and your own attorney had to tell you in public, because apparently you make your own rules. So if you have $5,000 to forgive, which I'm very grateful that you did, we need to find another way to help families in this community, because poverty is a direct link to criminal activity. Do you understand that? Good. Now have a great day.
Our last speaker is Marcy West. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Marcy West, 331 Carolina Circle, Winston-Salem, and also candidate for County Commissioner in District B. Of two issues I wanted to mention today. The first thing is meeting times, which we've talked about many times, but I really do urge you, we have one final evening meeting left. It's scheduled now for one week before Christmas. I'm not bringing this up today for the first time. I'm not bringing this up today for the first time. I would love to have you reconsider that and move that meeting to the first week in December, in consideration of the residents and also of the staff. Number two, I would like to actually say, I really am extremely concerned with the financing decisions and the things that happened in terms of this school property purchases. It seems to me that there's a major process issue, and we really should have you consider some type of a better coordination with the schools to really take responsibility for the finances and the financial decisions that are being made. In the community I was in before, I was on a finance committee, and what we had actually there is there were coordination with different committees. So different people on the Board of Selectmen would actually meet with different areas. They'd have representatives for the schools, for the fire department, different areas, to make sure that nothing fell through the cracks and everything was fully considered. And I would love to have you reconsider the way that you do your oversight and expand that.
All righty. Thank you all. We are now ready, I'm ready to turn the meeting over to our county manager. I would say that we have one discussion item afterwards from Chris Murphy. Yes, Chrissy? Yes, you're looking, yes. And it's on a upcoming ordinance presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed and hopefully questions answered. Agenda item number four is a resolution approving the amount to be spent by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education to acquire land to be used for the future Ashley Elementary School site, and an associated amendment to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance to transfer $50,000 from budget reserve to the new Ashley Elementary project. This will authorize the Board of Education to purchase a .26 acre vacant lot for $50,000, $45,000 for purchase of the property, and $5,000 for closing costs and attorney's fees, utilizing budget reserve from the 2023 two-third bonds.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner McDaniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Woodbury. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
One no. Motion carries six to one.
Agenda item number five is an amendment to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance to transfer $450,000 from budget reserve to the new Ashley Elementary project. This is also utilizing two-third bonds to provide $100,000 to establish an estimate or GMP and other construction-related services by Balfour Beatty, and $350,000 in architect fees.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number six is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate prior-year fleet sub-fund residual balances in the amount of $1,604,632 for the Sheriff's Office Emergency Services, Parks, and General Services to purchase replacement vehicles and equipment.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate fund balance for prior-year DWI payments to the City of Winston-Salem, and a resolution approving a revised interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the City of Winston-Salem regarding the shared use of the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Traffic Safety Project Grant Award for the continuation of the Forsyth County DWI Joint Task Force. This item will appropriate fund balance to fiscal year 26 for 75% payment back to the city in the amount of $59,740. And moving forward, we are updating the way in which we administer the grant.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wizzenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate $700,000 from reserved fund balance for economic development projects previously approved by the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, and transfer to the Capital Projects Ordinance, and an associated amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to accept a transfer from the General Fund for Economic Development Projects previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. This item appropriates $700,000 from the 2020 PEGO CPO for hangar improvements at 3820 North Liberty Street at the airport.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
We have two seconds by Commissioner Wilson and Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is a resolution ratifying execution of an interlocal agreement with the City of Winston-Salem to provide 911 communications dispatching services for the 2025 Carolina Classic Fair, and an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate funds from the city for providing the services. This appropriates $9,032 from the city to Forsyth County Emergency Services to cover the cost of overtime at the fair.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizzenhut, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10 is a resolution authorizing execution of a grant agreement between Forsyth County and the North Carolina Department of Transportation to fund the control tower renovations at Smith Reynolds Airport, and a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of an agreement with Lomax Construction Incorporated for the control tower renovations at the airport, and a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Avcon Engineers and Planners Inc. to provide construction phase services for the control tower, and an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate $119,745 from committed fund balance from the airport and transfer to the County Capital Projects Ordinance for the project, and an amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to accept a transfer from the General Fund and amend the airport control tower project budget. Essentially, the FAA issued a grant to the county in the amount of $1,50855, with the ability to amend the total award up to $1,786,300 for design, construction, equipment at the airport control tower. This item would also allow change orders up to $285,455. Essentially, this item allows us to execute all the necessary agreements, appropriate committed fund balance as well.
I'm happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? Do you know, I'd like to compliment Mark Davison for his work on this grant, the best in the nation, and basically, he's going to cover everything almost totally, which is great. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Federal Aviation Administration to fund the crash fire rescue truck for Smith Reynolds Airport, and a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Oshkosh Corporation, doing business as Oshkosh Airport Products, to purchase the crash fire rescue truck, and an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate committed fund balance from the airport and transfer to the County Capital Projects Ordinance, and an amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to accept a transfer from the General Fund and to appropriate North Carolina Department of Transportation grant funds for the purchase of the crash fire truck. Essentially, the FAA and North Carolina Department of Transportation awarded $881,000 to cover 95% of the cost of the crash fire truck. The cost of the truck is $1,3,596. It does require a local 5% match of $46,369, which does leave a remaining balance of $76,227. But we are also requesting authorization to accept an additional grant funds, not to exceed $120,857, which would cover the required local share. And so this item allows us to execute all of the appropriate agreements and accept and transfer the necessary funds.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion approved by Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a purchase order to Capital Ford, Inc. for the purchase of 13 vehicles, in a total not to exceed $612,605.58 for sheriff's office vehicles.
Do we have a motion?
I approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for sprinkler system inspection services for various Forsyth County building locations to Twin City Sprinkler Company LLC for a term of 32 months, for a total not to exceed
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Limble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie and Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 14, our 12 appointments to the Forsyth County Fire Commission, and I'll turn this item over to Vice Chair Wizzenhut.
Thank you. The following applicants can be appointed by acclamation Forsyth County Fire Commission: Steve Robertson, chief officer or administrative officer of a municipality that contracts with Forsyth County to provide service; Carl Walker, president of Forsyth County Firefighters Association; and Gary Styers, vice president of the Forsyth County Firefighters Association; and Richard Limble, county commissioner.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The following appointments will require a vote, and it's the Forsyth County Fire Commission, and there are six appointments. And you may vote for six. Our applicants are Douglas Bauer, Richard Berman, Kevin Gray, Dewey Kavinoff, John Fox, Thomas Fox, Fred Franklin, William Gray, Matthew Guthrie, James Hassel, Don Martin, Shane Moore, Steve Poff, James Reed, Michael Self, Brian Tuttle, and David Williamson. You may vote for six.
Mr. Chairman, Fred Franklin, William Gray, David Williamson, Don Martin, Shane Moore, and Brian Tuttle received majority vote.
All righty. Thank you very much.
The Forsyth County Fire Commission, this capacity is two chief officers or board members of a fire department that contracts with Forsyth County to provide fire service. The citizens wishing to serve, Fred B. Roth, Eddie Bottoms, Darren Needham, and Norman Walker, you may vote for two.
Mr. Chairman, Fred B. Roth and Eddie Bottoms received majority vote.
Thank you very much.
Okay. There's one appointment. The capacity is one chief officer or administrative officer of a municipality that contracts with Forsyth County to provide services. And this can be appointed by acclamation, Steve Robertson.
Second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We have one appointment. The capacity is president of the Forsyth County Firefighters Association, and the citizen wishing to serve is Carl Walker, and this can be appointed by acclamation.
Did we include a lot of those in that first vote?
I thought we did.
I think we did, yeah. I think we did. Did we do all the acclamations, single ones?
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to...
Yes, sir.
That's why I just asked him, and we already done.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question.
Yep.
Okay. I got it. I got it. Thank you. All righty.
I think, did we need to vote on that one?
No, we voted on all of those already.
Okay. Our next appointment, the capacity is Vice President... Vice President of Forsyth County Firefighters Association, Gary Styers, and it may be appointed by acclamation.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Ones tell me yes, ones tell me no, so I'm gonna do it. One county commissioner, and that citizen wishing to serve is Richard Limble, and this can be appointed by acclamation.
Second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We are finished.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Agenda items 15 through 18 are our reports. 15 is the fiscal year 25 encumbrance rollover report. 16 is the September appropriations transfer report. 17 is the ARPA disbursement status report, and 18 is the October partners' health management update.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Limble. We have second by Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And we have one discussion item, that's UDO CC30. Dan Roberts, our project planner, will brief this item.
Okay, good. It's not Chris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Dan Roberts, and I'm a project planner with Planning Staff, and I'm here today to discuss UDO CC30. All right, so the petition is Forsyth County, and the request is to amend section 6.5.2.G. .4 to revise sign regulations for parks and recreation areas open to the public. So as you know, the county is currently developing a 200-plus acre agriculture and recreation area north of Tobaccoville, which is expected to draw visitors from out of town for regular use and special events. As such, the county believes an appropriately-sized sign would help visitors more easily find the park. Currently, the park entrance is located in... located in RS20 zoning, which limits the sign area to 18 square feet. The county sign regulations currently allow parks and recreation areas larger than 1,000 acres to have freestanding signs of up to 75 square feet in area, and the county believes that this provision should be expanded to include parks and recreation areas of 100 acres or more, such as the new agricultural park in question. And Planning Staff agrees that a 75-square-foot sign is appropriate for such a large facility to ensure that visitors can find their destination easily and safely. This was heard by the Planning Board on October 9, public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval. Any questions?
Any questions?
Great, thank you.
That's all of our agenda items.
All righty. Well, we stand adjourned.